Good evening and welcome to the Orange County School Board's regular meeting scheduled for Tuesday, August 27, 2024. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. Board members are in attendance with the exception of Member Gould and Chair Jacobs. As a reminder, board members will not be engaging in outside electronic or digital communication during the meeting, so we can focus on the matters immediately before us. To my fellow board members, district staff, and members of the public, when speaking, please make sure your microphone is turned on and speak directly into it, so our YouTube and Orange TV viewers can hear you clearly. Again, thank you so much for participating in or attending tonight's meeting. We will now pause for a moment of silence, and I will invite you to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. And now for the pledge.
Our pledge allegiance is applied to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Vasquez, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as posted. So moved by Member Castor Dental, second. Second by Member Bird. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Let the record reflect that it was unanimous with all board members present. I said present. Present. Good evening and thank you for joining us for tonight's school board meeting. We have a special recognition to share with you before our order of business. Each month, a school board member will be honoring an employee in their district. These employees have shown exceptional dedication and contributed to the success of our students. We are grateful for every one of our dedicated staff members, and this is one more way we are pleased to honor them. I'd like to invite Member Castor Dental, who represents District Six, to tell us about the OCPS staff member she has selected for the first school board spotlight of the 2024-25 school year. Member Castor Dental.
All right, thank you, Madam Gallo. I am honored to recognize a living legend, School Board Services Administrator Deborah McGill.
Yay!
Yeah. So many of you in this room have worked with her, and she has been with OCPS for more than 30 years. She has worked with 12 school board chairs. That goes back a long way, and six superintendents. Who was the first one? Dr. Schott? Dr. Schott?
Oh, my God.
Can you name them all? Dr. Shaw, Dr. Smith, Dr. Blocker, Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Vasquez. Hey, that's pretty good on my part. Okay, so this recognition is a personal one. She has assisted several of us on the board, including me, in our duties as board members. Deborah is dependable, reliable, and deeply knowledgeable. She's been key to the smooth operation of School Board Services for decades. She manages staff, she solves problems behind the scenes, and gathers information so that we can do the best to help our constituents. Deborah has been an invaluable asset to OCPS. Her kindness, her expertise, and her meticulousness will be sorely missed after she retires on August 30. And I don't know that everyone knew that you were going to be retiring. So thank you, Deborah, for all you have done for OCPS and for School Board Services and for all the board members. I know that I'll be forever grateful for your commitment to our board members and staff and students. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Castor Dental. I want to read something on behalf of Chair Jacobs, who's not with us this evening. She says, "Thank you to Member Castor Dental. I didn't want to get ahead of you, but I couldn't wait to seeing Deborah's praises as well. I have worked closely with her for the past six years as a district's board chair. In fact, Deborah was the first person I met when I entered this building in 1995."
Wow.
Yeah. "There have been a lot of changes since that meeting, but the one thing that hasn't changed is the warm and welcoming spirit Deborah brings to OCPS every day. School Board Services is a hidden jewel that many of our employees and students never get to see. They work day in and day out to help each school board member, so we can be our most effective. And for many years, Deborah has been the leader of that department. I am grateful for her servant heart and for her friendship. It has been an honor to serve alongside Deborah during the final chapter of her career at OCPS. Congratulations. I know all of us will wish you joy and fulfillment in retirement." And again, that's from Chair Jacobs. So we have, my board's lighting up, so we have a lot of comments from our fellow school board members. So do we want to do pictures now or wait till everybody's commented? Now, Frank? Okay, we're gonna go comments first. Member Bird.
Thank you, Chair. I too have been working with Deborah for the past six years on the school board, and I believe that Deborah was the one who reached out to me after I first got elected, and she's the one that did the new onboarding and, you know, made it feel like I was drinking out of a fire hose, but she was so good about it. But as the Chair said, it's that warm, caring spirit that she brings every day that is just gonna be so missed. And I'm gonna miss you. But I want to thank you, because you were my personal assistant. We don't have one-on-one assistants, we share, but you were assigned to me for a few years. And you helped me a lot. And I think sometimes people are under the misconception, or at least in my case, I don't know if it's like this for all board members, that this is kind of a part-time gig. And that couldn't be further from the truth. I know my assistant is constantly helping, and there is no way I could ever do my job without the School Board Services help. There is no way. It's just 24 hours a day, nonstop. And School Board Member Services is tremendous in helping us do the work that we need to do to make sure that the children of OCPS are getting all the things that they need. And Deborah led that charge for so long, and she's really synonymous with, you know, OCPS and the school board. Everybody knows who Deborah McGill is. So it's going to be quite a hole that you will be leaving, and we will certainly miss you. Thank you so much, Deborah, for everything, and I hope you have a wonderful time in your retirement.
Thank you, Member Felder. Member Bird, Member Felder.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening. Yes. I've known Deborah for over 30-some years. I've known her as a friend, the wife of my friend, Reginald McGill. And I remember when they got married. I remember when she was pregnant with Danielle. I remember so many things about Deborah. I remember when she first got hired to work under Katie Adams when she was on the board, and Deborah was with School Board Services. Deborah has been so many wonderful things to so many of us here on the board. Her expertise in her writing skills, her skills to communicate is just phenomenal. I can recall when I first got on the board, I came to her and I said, "Deborah," so this is like my coronation, I said, "And this bill, this place is not going to be big enough. We need to, I've already talked to Little Levon, and we're going to the Dr. Phil's Performing Arts Center so that all of my people can come." She looked at me very calmly. She did not get excited. She said, "Vicki, I've been working with the school board for years. No one has ever had any kind of reception at the Performing Arts Center. You're going to do whatever you need to do right in this building." And I was like, "Oh, okay, I guess that will have to happen." So I, and I can recall, I'd be sitting in my office and trying to type different things, and Deborah just is a walking dictionary in a thesaurus. I said, "Deborah, what is another word for da-da-da-da-da?" And she'd come in, and she'd say, and just so smart, and just it's going to be so missed on so many levels. And when I had my bout of illness, as I'm still recovering, there was not a morning that I woke up that I didn't find a text from Deborah McGill saying something wonderful about praying for me and that, all these encouraging words. And I'm just going to miss you so much. But see, I have your phone number, and I know where you live. So I still have access to you, and I'm so grateful for that. So in closing, if I were a member of the hip-hop genre, I would say to you, Deborah McGill, you are the perfect beat in a single rhyme. Enjoy your retirement.
That was so awesome, Member Felder. And I'm happy to say that Member Salamanca has to come next. Member Salamanca.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair. Yeah, no, that's tough to follow. But Deborah, I'm going to miss seeing your smile first thing I walk into that office. I'm the newest one up here with Member Ferrante as well. And you've just been such a welcoming and calming presence for what someone up here said sometimes. It's like just drinking out of the water hose in your first year, two, maybe more. And I know that, you know, when I can't find Bridget somewhere, you know, she goes to Ireland to help FSU lose. Then I have to, I'm always, you know, I'm running around figuring something out, and you're really my go-to person when I know I need all this information. I don't know how this has been done for the past X amount of years, and Deborah will have an answer. Sometimes you have it even when Bridget doesn't, so it's really nice. Sometimes I just go straight to the source of knowledge. And you've just been so incredible. And thank you so much for your welcoming presence. I'm really bummed that I don't get to have you around for the rest of my time here with OCPS, but you are leaving some really big shoes for other folks to fill. I think you have set such an incredible example of what doing a just solid job at what you do. You're so responsive. You're so, the quality and excellence of your work and everything you do and how you care about all of us and everyone in this district, it just showed every day in your work. And so really big shoes to fill, and we will miss you. And I'm sorry I don't get to have you. I'm very jealous of those up there who have gone to work with you a lot more. But I'm so excited for your retirement. Clearly, it's your time, and you've earned it more than many times over. Enjoy as many lighthouses as you can out there. Thank you.
You, Member Salamanca. Superintendent Vasquez.
So glad I didn't have to follow, Board Member Felder. So Deborah, I've known you for a long time. And I think that what has always impressed me and has never changed is the way that you lead with such grace, right? And such professionalism. And you have this loving style about you that makes everybody, no matter who it is, feel important. And truly, you could see how much you loved your job, no matter what the board meeting or work session, no matter how long. And I think the record was one that went past 2:00 a.m. And I remember, boy, the next day, she was happy and chipper, where the rest of us were like, "Oh, my goodness, not another meeting." And you just exude such happiness. And you care so much about the people that you work with and the people you work for and the community that you serve. You will be missed. But I wish you all the very best on your next journey. I know you're going to have a blast, and that you will hopefully occasionally pop in and check on us.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. Member Ferrante.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you so much, Deborah. Truly, you have been a huge vital role for each of us. When I first got on the board and they said that there was School Board Services and assistants, and what I've seen, the whole team, each of you, to me, you guys are like our chief of staffs for the school board department, like for us. It goes beyond just being an assistant. To me, an assistant is somebody who just tells you when you're going to be somewhere at a certain time. You go above and beyond all of that, each of you. And I want to thank you for heading that up for so long. And I think everybody said everything, but your joy and your smile, we will miss you. And I'm so excited for your new adventures, and I hope you will keep us posted on the different things that you do.
So I just want to say thank you, Deborah. It's been a pleasure working with you, and everybody's said it best. There is nobody that embodies grace and happiness and kindness quite like you do. You are, in fact, the calming presence in that office. We're always running around with our heads chopped off, and you'll always find Deborah at her desk or walking around, and she's always smiling, and she's always willing to help. So I just wanted to say how much we appreciated you, how much of a pleasure it's been to get to know you and to work with you for these last six years. And I have no doubt that you're going to take that same grace and kindness and loving gestures and take it into retirement and just have the time of your life. So congratulations and Godspeed. Thank you.
General Counsel.
So Deborah and I have known each other for a quarter of a century now. Deborah knew me when I had hair, and it was brown. And we first met when I was an intern at the school district. So I intern here for the General Counsel's office. And Deborah would always take time to talk to me. She would explain how things worked in the office, why things were done the way they did, the way they were. And the kindness and grace that she has shown for the last 25 years has always touched me. We've worked together now for the last 14 years since I've been back at the school district. And anytime I go to ask her a question, "Hey, do you remember where this item was? Hey, where can I find this?" The answer was immediate, quick, and she always took care of anything that I needed. And I'm gonna miss working with Deborah. She was, she was, she is a wonderful, wonderful human being, and she's an even better human being than she is an employee. And she's been a great employee for the last 30-some-odd years here. So I will miss you, Deborah.
Thank you, Mr. Pomerini. Dr. Castor Dental.
All right, thank you. I get to come back with this little second bite of the apple here. I agree with what everyone here said about you today, Deborah. And I can tell that we're not the only ones who care so much about you. You have quite the fan club there with you today. And I hope that you will still send me my very first Christmas card every year.
That's true. That's true. She does that.
Yeah, so I think we're ready for a picture.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sure. Make sure you're not blocking anybody. Look at my assistant Sandra first. Look happy.
One, two, three, four, five. I would say five is safe.
Perfect, good. Look forward to me. Look happy. And on three, good. One, two, and three. Stay there. Hold on. Any other friends in family? Run. Good, good, good. Hold on. You still have that iPhone?
Yes, I sure do. Okay, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that was lovely. Dr. Vasquez, do we have any newly appointed administrators to present tonight?
Yes, we do. We have three. We're going to begin with David Edwards, who is the new Assistant Principal at Orange County Virtual School.
I'd like to express my gratitude to Superintendent Dr. Vasquez, Deputy Superintendent Armbruster, distinguished Orange County School Board members, Principal Gurley, for affording me this wonderful privilege of serving as Assistant Principal at Orange County Virtual School. Having lived in Orange County for 10 years now, as well as my own daughter, who's with me tonight as an elementary teacher in OCPS, it's long been one of my desires to work in this district. I'm grateful that the right opportunity at the right time presented itself, and I am humbled by your confidence in me and look forward to working with Principal Gurley and her amazing team at OCVS. Thank you very much.
David, we're so happy you crossed the line and came to the best district.
He's coming to us from Osceola County Schools.
Yes, I can, absolutely. Okay, so next, we have Vanessa Marshall, who is going to be the new Assistant Principal at Evans High School.
Good evening. How are we doing?
Great.
Good, good. Well, can you tell I'm happy to be here? I want to thank School Board members and Dr. Superintendent Vasquez for this opportunity, and to Board Member Karen Castor Dental for, I'm in your district, thank you for this opportunity. I also want to thank my, I'm coming from Orange County Virtual School by way of Seminole County, so I'd like to thank Brandy Gurley for the opportunity and the support for getting me back in the game. I took a little hiatus to be that mom, now an empty nester to two student athletes. And the opportunity that I've been given now with, at Evans, with Mr. Martinez and my amazing principal, Ms. Nelson Warren, has really imparted in these four weeks that I've been over there, a lot of, she's taken my leadership to another level, and I thank you for this opportunity. And I want to, can't leave without thanking God and the opportunity that my children told me to go back and do what I love, and that's being with kids. So thank you for the opportunity. I am excited to take my career to the next level as being a bleeding that green, being a Trojan, yes, go Trojans, where we really are, every student has a front row seat in my book and my principal that has taught me already the meaning of pride, determination, and perseverance. So thank you for the opportunity.
And we have Sulimad Medina, who is going to be the new Assistant Principal at Water Spring Middle.
Well, good evening to all, and I would like to take this opportunity to express my most sincerest gratitude to all the board members. Thank you so much, Dr. Vasquez, for your leadership, Dr. Armbruster, Dr. Fristler, Ms. Gibson, Dr. Sanchez Corona. I'm super excited to be here. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank my rock, who is my mother. She made me who I am. This is what an ELL student looks like when she grows up. And I would like to thank my daughters, because I always put them in the back, but they were the wind beneath my wings. And I do this for them. They're a big reason of the why. I believe every student can. I want to build a better community. You guys are building a better community, and there's no better place to be than here in Orange County. So thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you. Are we getting pictures, Dr. Vasquez? Yes. All right. The school board has determined through
The School Board has determined through its Communications Committee meetings to change the process by which it honors various groups and issues. All previous proclamations will be adopted by vote of the Board in this meeting as celebrations slash observations. Any new celebrations slash observations will be updated each year and placed on the Board Agenda in August for approval. The list will remain on the agenda for the entire school year. District staff will continue to create graphics for the web, social media, and marquees to celebrate the designated month, weeks, and days. In addition, the School Board may issue proclamations for special occasions and in memoria to recognize the death of notable individuals connected to the districts. Proclamations and in memorial will be brought forward during agenda development process as needed. And so now we need a discussion by the Board members. We need a motion to... Well, I guess we're going to discuss first. Does anybody have any questions, concerns with the proclamations in the order that they've been placed on the agenda? Okay, seeing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adopt. We have a motion by Member Ferrante. Do we have a second? Second by Member Byrd. All in favor, say aye. Let the record reflect that every Board member present voted in the affirmative. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, 2.03 was our speakers from CTA, OESPA, and OCASA. And Mr. Turner is out there, so I wanted to just remind-
And he's there wondering what I'm doing, isn't he? So we're gonna, we're still in good posture. I can just go back, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I scratched through some things and then I forgot, so I apologize to Mr. Turner. But I would like, at this time, to invite Matt Turner, President-elect of the Orange County Association of School Administrators, to the podium to speak to the Board. Thank you.
No, you're good. You know, they always move it up. I gotta wait. All right, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. Welcome to a new school year. We're so excited to start the year. Tonight, we were going to introduce our entire Board to you, because we have a, an extensive Board with a, with a lot of various job titles and duties. However, when it rains at 3 o'clock and thunderstorms go till 5 or 6, and no one can get here but me, so we will do that another night. But I did want to give you a quick update on the Orange County Association of School Ministers, if you would let me have a few minutes of your time. So first of all, I wanted to let you know where our enrollment is sitting. We, we thrive on active membership in our association. As we've previously stated, probably five or six years ago, we were hovering around under 200 members of about 550 school-based administrators. That's who we opened up our membership to. As of today, we are right around 341, which puts us over 60%, 62% give or take. It may be at 344 tomorrow, since we have three new APs that were in here a minute ago. So they will be getting an email from me tonight to hit them up. But we are feeling very good about that. I will also say, we do have a rich Board that serves a variety of purposes. We have principal leaders at all the levels, assistant principal leaders at all the levels, and we have various chairs, such as membership, legal, and other service positions. So I am happy to say we are represented on our executive Board, our Board, by six out of the seven districts. So sorry, Angie, but we don't have anyone from District 1 at this point. But we do have plenty of, we do have plenty of members in District 1, so we will act, or we will actively make sure we get someone on the Board from there.
I would appreciate that.
Absolutely. You know, it is a position where we, we have to get them to do work for us, so we have to make sure people know that we are, we need their help.
You have to volunteer them. Like, if you just volunteer them, then-
That's true. That's true. Can I, can I throw your name out there?
Absolutely.
Okay, good deal. All right. So we, we have a very dedicated Board, and we're very excited about that. The last thing I really want to talk to you about is our kind of goals for the year. You know, we really do want to promote and increase our membership. We don't want to do that just so we can walk in here and say, hey, we have 350 members, look how cool we are. But we really do want a representative voice for our members and for their principals and assistant principals. You know, we want to know how they're feeling. We want to get an understanding of what we can help them with. So that, that's one of our goals. We really do want to improve on bringing forward possible solutions to issues we feel like we have at the school-based level. We feel very fortunate, as I've mentioned before, that Dr. Armbruster and Dr. Vasquez give us an ear to listen to our concerns. We realize we don't necessarily always see the global perspective that they do, and so we're, we're working back and forth. But we are going to make it our goal to bring forward solutions, not just problems. Very quick, one other thing, and it is our, our goal to bring forward more professional development opportunities for our members. We, we are a very large PLC where we can bounce ideas off each other, so that is our goal to kind of bring that forward. So we're excited for another great school year. Our principals are reporting some excellent outcomes to start the first two weeks of the school year, and we're super excited to move forward.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. All right. In order to provide governmental transparency, as well as reasonable opportunities for the public to access and participate in the decision-making process, there are various methods by which the public can provide input to the School Board on an agenda item. Those include coming to speak to the School Board in person and via email in advance of the meeting. These methods are all published on the district's website and in Board Docs. Mr. Pomerini, do we have anyone who has come to speak to the School Board on any of the items under public hearing on the agenda?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Pomerini. All right, then we're going to jump straight to item 301, which is our public hearing on revised Board Policy, EBB, Accident Prevention and Safety Program. Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. We are bringing to the Board the revision to the policy, EBB. We had a work session on August 13th of 2024. Notification to both CTA and OESPA occurred on the 24th of July. The public, the published date notification was on the 28th of July. We held Rural Development Workshop on the 20th of August, and we're bringing it to the Board today for final approval.
Do we have anybody who wishes to speak on the public hearings, Dr. or Dr. Mr. Pomerini?
No, Madam Chair.
Do we have any Board member who'd like to speak to this policy? All righty. Seeing none, I'll take a motion?
Motion?
Motion by Member Salamanca, second? Member Ferrante seconds the motion. All in favor, say aye. Let the record reflect that it was unanimous by all School Board members present. Next, we're going to move on to public hearing on the revised Board Policy, GCQF, Suspension and Dismissal of Professional Staff. Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. We held our work session on August 13th of 2024, notified CTA and OESPA on the 24th of July, published the information on the 28th of July, held Rural Development Workshop on the 20th of August, and are bringing to the Board today for final approval.
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. Mr. Pomerini, has anybody come before to speak to this?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion on revised Board Policy, GCQF. So moved by Member Castor Dental, second? Second by Member Salamanca. All in favor? Aye. Let the record reflect that all Board members present voted in the affirmative. And then for our last public hearing on revised Board Policy, GDQD, Suspension and Dismissal of Support Staff. Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you. Once again, we held our work session on the 13th of August. Notification to both CTA and OESPA occurred on the 24th of July. We published the information on the 28th of July, held our Rural Development Workshop on the 20th of August, and are bringing it to the Board for final approval today.
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. Mr. Pomerini, do we have any speakers?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any discussion by the Board? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approved revised Board Policy, GDQD. So moved by Member Ferrante, second? Second by Member, Member Felder. All in favor, say aye? Let the record reflect that it passed in the affirmative with all Board members present. All right, we are going to move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Pomerini, do we have anyone who has come to speak to the School Board on any items on the consent agenda?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Seeing that there is no member of the public who wishes to provide public comment, we will move on to the consent agenda. Do we need a motion? Okay, it's not in the script. It's not in the script. Oh, it is. Okay, seeing that there's no, we're going to ask for a motion. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Member Ferrante. Can I get a second? Second by Member Byrd. Thank you, Member Byrd. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none. Let the record reflect that all Board members present voted in the affirmative. All right, so now we're going to move on to the non-consent emergency item agenda, and we will hear from Dr. Vasquez next, right?
We, yes, we don't have any emergency items, so I can just give my very short report. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm, I'm very pleased to say we've had two weeks of school that were off to a great start. We're so thankful to our teachers, support staff, administrators, that worked so hard to ensure we had a safe opening to the school year. We are looking forward to what the collaboration this year with the various community agencies that we partner with to continue to provide opportunities for our students. I did want to update the Board just on two particular issues. The first one has to do with planning days for our teachers. As you know, we offer planning days in the past during the summer, and this year, for the first time, we offered up to 10 planning days that were voluntary for our teachers in an effort to provide them some paid time. Many, if not all, work during the summer to prepare for the upcoming school year. And as we are looking to continue to find ways to support them, take things off of their plate, we ask them for feedback on, on those planning days. Were they helpful? Should we continue with them? And any suggestions they might have for us. So I'm pleased to say that out of the respondents that replied to our, our survey, 87% of them did take advantage of those planning days during the, the summer. And for the most part, 79% were very satisfied with those days, and 23, satisfied and very satisfied. They did have four areas that they brought to our attention. The first one, that they appreciated the ability to plan remotely. There were some issues around communication of that with our, from our various administrators, and both Mr. McCracken and Dr. Armbruster worked with us to help clarify in those situations where that was not made clear. They asked if we could have the resources, particularly the CRMs, available to them sooner. As you may know, we revise them during the summer, but that it would be helpful, especially for those that did planning during the earlier part of the summer, that they would be able to make use of those resources. So we're going to work with our Chief Academic Office to make sure those resources are available sooner for them to be able to use. They did bring up compensation, that they would like for us to revisit the amount that is being paid during planning time. It is not their daily rate of pay, so we'll work with the CTA to come to an agreement on that. And we are hoping to be able to also offer that this upcoming summer for our teachers, so that they can get paid for the time that they are using over the, over the summer. So thank you for the feedback. We're hoping that they see the benefit of that time spent this summer payoff during the school year. And my last comment is that I'm pleased to announce that our second People One location is opening up on the 30th of September on West Colonial Drive. As of yesterday, we have almost 3,000 of our members that have signed up for People Health. We are excited to be able to offer this benefit to our employees free of charge, and we are looking to see and get feedback from our members as to the quality of service that they're receiving, how accessible the locations are, and at the end, the quality of service that they are receiving. So we're thankful that we've been able to offer that and look forward to the feedback that we will get from our members. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. Which, which site's open currently? Is it the one on Gore Street?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, I got my, I told you, I got my packet. It was very, I'm very excited about, about People One. All right, next, we're going to move on to Mr. Pomerini. Mr. Pomerini, do you have a report?
Yes, Madam Chair, very briefly. Three lawyers in our office went to our Florida School Board Attorneys Association Conference on Friday and Saturday in Boca Raton. We heard about truancy, mental health in the law. I gave a presentation on recent trends in the United States Supreme Court and decisions that affect school districts. So we have got a lot of good information, got a lot of good networking with our attorneys around the state. On Monday, I was new to the group, but I am now part of the Florida Association District School Superintendent's Training for Ethics, you know, the four hours you all have to do. If you choose to take it by video, you will see my smiling face along with Amy Enval, who is also still doing the training, along with myself, Brian Moore from Thad's, Ellen Odom from Escambia County, and David Kopersky from Pinellas County. So obviously, we will set up training for you all to meet the four hours, but if you choose to take the, the online training, you will see me doing a part of that. And then finally, with your approval of the Board Agenda tonight, Consent Agenda, you all have made me your General Counsel. It is an abiding, a big sense of pride. My wife, my son, and my daughter got waylaid by the same weather stuff that Matt Turner was talking about, so they couldn't be here tonight. But in the audience is my father, Giancarlo, my mother, Denise, and my great aunt Linda, who have been with me every step of the way. And it is, I was here as an intern 24 years ago, and I always thought it would be really cool to do this job. And you all have seen fit and to have the confidence in me to do it. I am forever grateful. I will work hard. I will make all of you proud of the selection you've made tonight, and I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Mr. Pomerini. We're happy to have you. All right, now we're going to move on to reports by School Board members. We don't have any committee reports, do we, from Communications or any? Nope. Okay, good. I just wanted to let the public know that the superintendent's evaluation, the superintendent's evaluation has been completed. The recommendation of all Board members was to renew her contract. Therefore, her contract is hereby renewed. Member Salamanca?
I don't know if any other members want to go ahead of me, but-
Oh, yeah. Is there any other policy level issues that the Board wishes to discuss or bring up for a future meeting? Seeing none, I'm turning it over to you, Member Salamanca.
All right. Well, now, you know, this obviously has been very exciting, but the really exciting part has arrived. As many of you up here know, but for those joining us, I usually run a summer fellows program with our high school students for District 2. And this is an opportunity, and this is something that when I ran for office, I cared deeply about, about bringing more student voices and perspective to the Board, as well as having students have exposure to the issues that impact everything we do up here. And so a couple of students here, that each of them spent the summer with me this past summer and worked on projects of their choice that they believe in- that they believe impact them, and it's their own observations on what we think we're doing great, what the areas that we could do better in. And so each of our Board members should have a one pager, it's bright and orange, about the projects that they talked about. And so we will have each of them come up and talk about their projects briefly and have their own presentations, but we're very excited to have them, and they'll introduce themselves as they come up. I think we are starting with Megha. Sure. To the right.
Uh, this? Okay, sorry. Okay, hello, everyone. I hope you're--
You might have to lower a little bit. Can we lower the, can we lower the thing a little bit? There we go.
Hello, everyone. I hope you're having a great day. So my name is Megha Ramprasad. I'm a junior at Lake Nona High. I created Project Access to help underprivileged students who are not given appropriate access to resources regarding post-secondary education, since I've seen inequality in my school and other schools as well. So the actual problem at hand consists of two things. First, there is a college prep and awareness gap between high-income, high-achieving students and low-income, high-achieving students. This leads to a lot of mismatch between colleges and students. Second, there are several myths perpetuated about the college admissions process by college counselors, which harms low-income, high-achieving students. Low-income, high-achieving is a student who is from a family that has an income level at or below 150% of the poverty line, and also has a 3.8 cumulative unwedged GPA. Mismatch means that students who are qualified for an institution are not applying, therefore being matched to a university that does not suit their needs. So here is some research that you can look over later, but in summary, low-income students often have poor college outcomes, and they are also less likely to complete a bachelor's degree compared to high-income, high-achieving students. Here is a graph that depicts application behavior in high-achieving students. As you can see in this graph, the majority of low-income students apply to non-selective colleges. In contrast, the graph depicts how much variety there is in college applications of high-income students. This severely impacts the rate at which we're sending low-income, high-achieving students to top universities. How can we send them to such an institution if they're not even applying? Here is a visual of investment banking analysis, analyst placement per school. There are 16 out of 20 top universities on this list. The University of Florida does not make an appearance on this list despite being the top university in Florida and a highly promoted institution within OCPS. So why exactly does this matter in OCPS? Orange County Public Schools had an 81% poverty average in the 2023 to 2024 school year. Please note that the district poverty average percentage only applies to OCPS Title I schools. 81% of OCPS students might not be receiving the necessary resources, both inside and outside school, to succeed in access post-secondary education. So one myth perpetuated about college admissions, about the college admissions process, is that low-income, high-achieving students can't perform on the same academic level as high-income, high-achieving students once they are accepted into a top university. However, when low-income students attend schools that provide adequate support and enrichment, they can thrive and be just as successful as their peers. Another myth that top, is that top universities and colleges are too expensive for low-income students. However, at Yale, if your family makes up to $65,000 a year, you are not expected to contribute to your education at all. In contrast, a low-income student would be, sorry, a low-income student would be in zero debt after graduating Yale, but would have about $60,000 in debt after graduating the University of Florida. So college can leave a low-income student in more debt if they decide to attend just any college, even if it doesn't fit their needs. Myth three would be that these low-income, high-achieving students will be just as fine at other colleges, such as their in-state, non-selective schools. However, low-income students who attend non-selective institutions have a far lesser chance of reaping the benefits of a high salary after graduation. So why Project Access? First, the, sorry, the proposed solution, the proposed solution to all of this would be Project Access. Key interventions would be application guidance and net cost information, which are both proven to work. We can intervene by delivering information via workshops two to three times a year. Project Access targets high school freshmen and seniors at Lake Nona High School for the pilot year. So why Project Access? First, the 81% poverty average, which again is only for Title I schools, in OCPS makes this problem evident. Additionally, this problem poses a very, this program poses a very low cost and risk to OCPS, since it'll only consist of workshops and volunteer guest speakers. Participants of Project Access will be surveyed at the end of, at the end to record their thoughts and concerns about whether or not the program has helped them or not. Finally, here are my sources. I'm open to any suggestions or inquiries, and thank you so much for your time.
Do our folks have any questions, or we can save them towards the end, but--
We do have questions. Member Bird, did you have a question, or did you just have something? Okay, Dr. Kastredal?
Yes, Megha, that was really informative, and that is college-level research you did there. And I think this is very important, what you have put together. I think that our counselors in our College and Career Centers should all have this information as well. I think they may know it, you know, they may have this experience, but I think just having come from you, and you kind of summarized it so well, I think this would be helpful. And I think other students should also have access to this. Do you have a plan to share this with anybody?
So as I mentioned, I'm planning, well, if it gets approved, I'm planning to host two to three workshops throughout the year, which I'll kind of host like myself. And yeah, I'd love to share it with students at Lake Nona High School, and hopefully, if it's a success, we can expand it throughout OCPS and share it with students all over the county.
I love that idea. Thank you so much. Good job.
Thank you.
You get an A+.
Thank you, Member Kastredal.
I just, can you go back to the slide where it has the graph on this activity? Because I think this graph is so powerful. It is just the study of the behavior of students when they apply to college. And so it's, these are all students that are equally competitive in terms of academics, and if you tend to be a high-income with access to opportunities, then you tend to do what you're supposed to do of college admissions, which is there's a percentage of non-selective universities, less selective, safety, match, and reach, and you see this kind of distribution. And it is that really tall bar, when you look at the students that are low-income and high-achieving, that is concerning and really impacts how they think about college. And so this is kind of, what I loved about your project was that you really talked about what are some low-lift interventions that we can do, and it's really just about information. So thank you for this. As I mentioned, it's great work. Thank you. Next, we have Kat and Nandana.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katerina Klinghammer, and I am the Senior Class President at Colonial High School.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nandana Sojjan, and I'm Student Body Vice President at Lake Nona High School.
Now, today, we're going to be dissecting into two different projects. We're going to start off with Students for Halfpenny, and then we're going to go into our SGA platform. So starting off, we have Students for Halfpenny. Now, first, we must go into what is the Halfpenny Sales Tax? Now, the Halfpenny Sales Tax helps pay for the renovation and recreation of different OCPS schools. And ever since it has been made, it has reduced portable usage by 75%, and it has assisted in the renovation or replacement of 136 OCPS schools. Overall, the Halfpenny Sales Tax is extremely crucial in ensuring that our schools are safe, they're well-built, and overall extremely effective for students. And now, the Halfpenny Sales Tax is up for reelection this year, of course. Now, in the past, in 2002 and 2014, voters voted for the Halfpenny Sales Tax, voted for the Halfpenny Sales Tax. And in 2002, the Halfpenny passed with 59.3% approval, and in 2014, with 64% voting in favor. Now, this is overall a pretty much half-and-half way of whether it'll go towards the Halfpenny Sales Tax or against it. However, the Halfpenny Sales Tax is extremely crucial for OCPS schools, and that is why we need to have more students' perspectives. So me and Nandana have created the Students for Halfpenny Organization. Now, Students for Halfpenny is a student-led organization where we essentially make different posts either monthly or twice a month about the Halfpenny Sales Tax. It's extremely informative. It tells students exactly what the Halfpenny Sales Tax is, a look into what it has done for our OCPS district so far, and even going into depth by reflecting the innovation in high school when it was, when it was finally opened. And these platforms were designed to, of course, share information about the Sales Tax to students. Now, a look into Students for Halfpenny, once again, this is among students, and the reason why we're mainly aiming for it to be towards students is because not only are students going to be the ones voting in the very, in the new election when it comes to our 18-plus voters, but by spreading awareness, we aim to alert families of these students of what exactly it does for not only the children, but for the community as a whole. So overall, by alerting students, we aim that they will, that they will also inform their families. Next, we go on to why social media? Now, as it has been found, approximately 90% of teenagers do use social media. And with this, we want to use our social media platform in order to connect with the most students. And we've considered having maybe posters in the front office or other things such as that, but we, we believe this is the way to be able to address and talk to the most students and do it ever so effectively. Now, within our different posts, we decided to use very vibrant, vibrant colors, such as this bright purple that we use, in order to make it extremely visually appealing for the students. And especially with something as informative as this, we want to make it as fun and engaging as possible. Now, our goal and our next steps for the Halfpenny Sales Tax is, of course, to increase student awareness among the Sales Tax. And in our time, in our time of, of using this, utilizing this platform, we aim to gain the account to 1,000 followers within our time. We're going to reach out to different clubs, different organizations, and different students within Lake Nona and Colonial High School in order to achieve this. And that is it for the Students for Halfpenny.
Hey, hi. Once again, I'm Nandana Sojjan, and I'm a senior at Lake Nona High School. My, mine and Kat's second part of our project is how the School Board and student government organizations can work together. I currently serve as my school's Student Body Vice President, so I'm very passionate about SGA, and I'm very happy to be able to propose an idea to bridge both SGA's and the School Board. Yeah, froze.
Yeah, the top one. Thank you.
So the D2 Fellowship, Maria Salamanca had her D2 Fellowship for the past two summers, like she mentioned previously, and it allows students to experience local public policy, develop workforce skills, and give back to their school district. This year, we had a team of five fellows who worked on various projects that range from raising awareness for the Halfpenny Sales Tax to nurturing student pathways for their success. The Fellowship has been an incredible opportunity for us, but also an incredible opportunity for Maria to be directly involved with the students at the schools that she represents. We recommend other Board members to do the same, as this connection should be continued throughout the school year instead of just the summer. It will give students the same opportunities that we were given and continue the initiative of the School Board members hearing from the students that they represent. Similar to her D2 Summer Fellowship, we encourage other School Board members to do the same. The Fellowship presents a fantastic, a fantastic opportunity for students passionate about SGA to engage on a broader scale that's more than just their local high school. For example, students can work on ways to change the SGA curriculum, to work on more relevant projects. They can voice their opinions on Portrait of a Graduate. They can voice their opinions on discipline implementation, et cetera. Students are very busy with their own day-to-day activities, so what would their time commitment to this project look like, you may be wondering? Students would meet once a month, alternating between in-person and online meetings. Students will be expected to work independently on projects over the course of the Fellowship, with check-ins each month with their School Board members to guide them along the way. So what is the goal? School Board members and their fellows will work together to find ways for SGA to be more impactful and purposeful in both enhancing student life and addressing community needs. Currently, SGA's are very much seen as the school spirit and the fun aspects of student government, but they're lacking meaningful impact. With the Board members and better curriculum guidance, they can collaborate to elevate SGA's role, which will enhance both their school and the overall county as we bridge this connection. So the SGA curriculum, currently, SGA's again are seen as just a school spirit class. One potential solution to making SGA's more beneficial is to revise the curriculum. Instead of them just being the School Spirit Week planning and the School Dances planning, this could involve integrating leadership training, community engagement projects, building relationships with industry professionals, and practical governance skills into the program. We recommend that the district use SGA curriculum as a tool in supporting the vision for Portrait of a Graduate. With Portrait of a Graduate, students can provide the School Board with their thoughts and feedback, and the School Board can take their insight when moving forward with this project. An SGA Fellowship would provide a long-term solution by hearing from the students' perspective year-round and using SGA's to push the missions at their own schools. For example, by using each school's set of clubs and organizations to bring awareness to the Portrait of a Graduate project. SGA's can provide students information of alternative pathways when graduating, as opposed to a traditional school or university. Now, District Council, SGA students can serve on a district-wide Student Council of School Board members. This council would include students from schools across the county, allowing the School Board to hear any issues firsthand. SGA students are seen to be the best of the best at each school. Therefore, they would be the perfect group of people to get honest opinions from. The council would work together to find solutions to problems and create ideas that both overall benefit their school and the school county. Overall, an SGA Fellowship would be advantageous for both SGA students and the School Board. This initiative could pave the way for enhancing SGA curriculum and advancing the Portrait of a Graduate mission. Establishing a District Council as well could address current issues and spark a wealth of innovative ideas. and spark a wealth of innovative ideas for collaboration between SGA students and the county, fostering meaningful progress and shared goals. Thank you.
And we are also open to any questions or comments.
Thank you all so much. That was wonderful, wonderful information. So, Member Frant, she's up first.
Wow. I gotta say, you, both of you two, thank you for what you did. I would love to get a copy of this. I was taking notes. Just because the information that you brought is so relevant. It is truly what we need as a school board is to hear from you. You're part of our constituents, to know what are you feeling? What are you seeing? You're the boots on the ground. And we talk about this a lot, where there's certain policies that we might make that sound great at the board table. And then, when they get rolled out to you all, you're thinking, what is going on? The cell phones won't. We're not going back on that one. But, um, but I truly appreciate this. I think it's great. I think it is innovative, and I love the ideas that you've brought. I especially love the SGA Fellowship. I think it's a great way for us to engage with each of our high schools and see how we can kind of collaborate together, especially with the Portrait of Graduate. I feel like that's all we've been talking about the last few weeks, really gearing up for that next vision and mission here coming up. So, I appreciate both of you and your hard work. Definitely A+ on my book.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Frant. Member Bird.
Okay, so, Scott Howitt in the back. I'm thinking that the next time you have a Half Penny Sales Tax presentation to give for a community group that you need to call, our friends over here. Yeah. She raised her hand. She's coming. And I also read on your bio, Kat, that you are aspiring to work in marketing. And I'm married to someone who works in marketing. And I can tell you that I think that you are well on your way to being the perfect, to having that be the perfect career choice for you. You definitely have that spark. And I don't know if you all noticed, but she was, did that whole presentation like without reading anything. So, way to go. And by the way, she's also involved in debate. Just another perfect example of how great debate is for our kids. But I loved your presentation. I love the idea of using the social media, because you're right. I mean, that's, let's face it, that's where kids go to get information and to also solve problems. Yesterday, I was with my daughter and we were getting her senior photos taken and the office was closed. And she, and the room was full of students that were like, we didn't, they didn't know what to do. So, all of us parents are like, oh, my gosh, what do we do? The kids are all like, Facebook, you know, they're like, not Facebooking, Instagramming. You know, they're like tagging the company. They had the business manager calling. They had, we got, we all got calls today and emails today. They were solving it like, like that. I mean, our kids today are remarkable children. So, our future is in really good hands. So, I'm so impressed with both your presentations. And I totally agree with using, using the voices. I do student advisory councils at my high schools. And I've done that for several years. And those meetings with my, with the students where they can sit with me honestly and tell me and give me that feedback is some of the most valuable feedback I get in my job from any of my stakeholders. Because as Member Frant said, you guys are living everything we do up here on this dais. You're the ones living it. And so, I am in full support of everything you said here. I too would like to have all of these presentations emailed to us. Make sure that we can get these, because the research and the amount of information in there is just terrific. So, way to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
We're not done. We're not done.
Oh, sorry.
Member, Dr. Castro Dental.
All right. Way to go, both of you. And you are both such great ambassadors. One of the things that I've been encouraging for our district is to increase our civic engagement for our students and their opportunities. And this is, this is perfect. This, I mean, you're, you're making such meaningful contributions. You're developing your own skills. You're informing Member Salamanca. That's good. But you're able to provide some really important information. And I've, I've listened to a number of those Half Penny Sales Tax presentations by our district, and you guys got it just right. And I think it's an important part that we haven't included is the student voice. I mean, I think that's powerful to get students' perspective on what it means to, to go to school every day in a school where the AC works and where the, you know, we don't have all these portables like we used to, and how that environment is so important. And I think you guys are really great messengers for the families and also for the students who are of voting age. I think that that is, is great. And as far as the fellowships, what a great opportunity to get input. I've mentioned it to Dr. Vasquez, how the idea that's been proposed to have a student member of our school board so that students can give that input and maybe have a rotational basis for different student government members. But this is, I think, an even more powerful way to do that, to get that in-depth perspective. And it allows more kids to be involved. And I love this model. And Member Salamanca, thank you so much for showing us that this can be done. I'm just sorry that I'm leaving the board now, but I do see my, someone in the audience who will be up here in a few months, and she's listening to your presentation, then I'm sure that she would like to put to, to get involved more with this kind of fellowship. So, thank you, Member Salamanca, for guiding them. And thank you both very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great job, ladies. You did a phenomenal job.
All right, Arisha.
Oh, okay. We got it. Hello, board. My name is Arisha Augustine. I am a junior at Colonial High School. And first, I just want to say thank you to Ms. Salamanca for the opportunity. And yeah, let's get into this presentation. Why CTE important to me? I am a student at Colonial High School where we have a partnered program with OTC where I have firsthandly seen the positive impact that these OTC.
I'm sorry. Can you get just a little closer to the microphone so that, so that the viewers can hear you?
Do I just repeat it?
Yes, yes, please. Yes.
Why is CTE important to me? I am a student at Colonial High School, as I said, where we have a partnered program with OTC where I firsthandly have seen the positive impacts that these programs have. I've seen it in my friends and seen how they benefited from these programs, pursuing careers in fields such as healthcare and beyond. The problem. Why aren't more students aware of the CTE pathways in schools? This may be one of two reasons. It could be due to limited information. There may be a lack of information on websites they look for or just inaccurate information. And these CTE programs may make it difficult to gather information or may lack detail on their websites if the brochure content is too high-level for them. Another reason maybe is counselor availability. Our counselors at our schools are very overwhelmed with all the students that they have and may not get to have, may not be able to sit down and have a one-to-one conversation with each student about what may be the right path for them. Potential solutions for this may be introducing career exploration programs, engaging with students in ways where we could have career days, fairs, field trips to explore diverse career paths, or possibly building strategic partnerships with different businesses or local businesses where they could offer internships, apprenticeships, and mentorships for hands-on experience. Another may be enhancing career counseling, strengthening career, strengthening school counseling services to guide students based on their interests and strengths, providing sources that allow students to reflect and explore a path that they may find beneficial for their future. A way that I've, a way that I found for, to help these students was a handbook. A handbook. I believe a handbook is an effective tool to promote the CTE programs to these, to our students. And here, we get into one of, or the first page of the handbook that I have made. And in the first page, we have just the font and describing what is inside of the handbook to make it just easier for our students to understand. And then, we go into a welcome message detailing what will be described inside of the handbook, which you guys can read on your own. That's a bit much to read. And then, we go into our goal. And if you guys see the arrow on the screen, the goal of this handbook is to find and help students pick a field that fits them best, including answers to any questions they may have, including salaries, skill sets, fields, companies, and CTE campuses for them, proving that there is something for everyone. And then, on the other page, we have a list of the programs that CTE programs include. And then, on another page, we have all the different campuses and schools in Florida. Well, these aren't all of them, but these are some that I was able to find. And then, we get into one of the first pages, which is the medical field. And I have students, or I have friends that are coming to OTC and being in medical assisting. And they have told me how much they love it and how they love the experience and they are able to really get into the field that they desire. And then, we go into another page that makes it easier for them to understand, like where they can work and the programs and the schools that have these programs. And then, there, we go into a different field, so architecture and construction. And if this is passed, then we will make one for all the different programs that are included for CTE. And yeah, I am open to any questions.
That was a fabulous job. Good job. First up is going to be Member Bird.
My garnbroozer. You know what? Do you have a comment on this one? Thumbs up. Okay, I was like a light bulb going off when you were speaking when you talked about the handbook was too, or the brochures were too high-level for kids. And then, when you, when you said a handbook is a good idea, but it's written by you in a way that the kids would understand. It was like a light bulb went off. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, I showed it to my friends and I was like, do you understand this? And they were like, yeah, like, this is so easy to understand. Like, I can pick apart anything and it can really like help me decide what I want to do.
Exactly. And I think that this just prove, further proves the discussions that we have all the time. Well, we should use the kids. We should use the kids more. This is a perfect example of, you know, let's, let's start working groups. Let's start bringing kids in when we are collaborating and doing things, the marketing. Let's talk to the kids a lot about what would be, what's the best way to reach your peers? What do you think would make this better for, for us to reach the kids? I think we've just got to be using our kids more, because as we could see, they do a great job. And it's just, it's so good. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bird. And Member Frant.
I just, to say, very, very, very impressed with just the thoughtfulness. I love exactly what a Member Bird was saying. I love that you brought your own flavor to this and worded it in a way that you knew that your fellow classmates would understand. And I think sometimes, as adults, we want to like embellish everything and make it sound really smart. And then, it can become so, like, you get lost in all the wording. And I think as we're seeing with the teenagers, you guys really want to just look, like Member Salamanca just pointed out, you really want to see, okay, what is the salary? What am I going to make per hour? What's going to be my yearly wage? And like, what are some of the things that I'm going to have to do to do this job? Do I like it? Do I not? What's the next one? Instead of all the embellishments. So, I love the idea of having a handbook. And I love the idea of having students create the handbook. Maybe even kids who are currently in these different career CTE programs could share what they thought, things that would have maybe been helpful for them to have prior to getting into the program. That would maybe encourage students to take certain classes prior to jumping in. But I agree that there is a disconnect somewhere. I don't know at what grade level. And I don't know if it's just in ninth grade, maybe. I think it'd be awesome for every parent to receive this handbook as well, for them to see that it isn't just classes to go to a four-year university, but you can actually graduate with your CTE diploma or whatever we're calling it. And so, I think just having that communication is key. So, I appreciate it. I appreciate you coming and all the work that you did. I think it's a great job, and I look forward to seeing this come to fruition.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Frant. Member Castro Dental.
Thank you. And this was also another in, eye-opener. And sometimes, we, we discuss different challenges that we want to overcome at the board. And we learn so much more when we're out in the schools and talking to the people who are affected by the decisions we make. And this is another example of how students' input is so valuable. And I think this is a great way, another example of why we need to really engage students who are the ones who are using the information that we're giving. And we're trying to really meet your needs. And it makes just total sense to ask for your input. So, thank you, because I think this will have another effect on more students. I appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for everything. It was a great, great presentation.
All right. Last but not least, we got Diego. Thank you, Arisha. That was amazing.
Good afternoon. My name is Diego Salazar and this is nurturing student pathways to success. So who am I and why this project? So I'm a person that was fortunate enough to be in a position to have a relatively high hard work to success ratio. Compared to many others from less fortunate socioeconomic backgrounds. So this is possible for me because I have had not only access uh to opportunities, but knowledge given to me of these resources. That have helped me to stay motivated to work towards my ambitions. So two examples of this are this fellowship that was accessible to me because I was an SGA. And a uh the community service project program that I did that held me accountable to complete um. A STEM youth engagement project they did last year. So another value uh that relates to this is that I feel like all people are clean slates when they're born. And so their passions that lead to success in their lives are can be nurtured from an early age, from childhood all the way to high school to beyond. And so for observations of problems, so on this project. Um, here's some data that can give a fuller picture for the problem. So first, in the portrait of a graduate review, uh, it called for an increase in math literacy and soft skills. As well as earlier career exposure and and career readiness. Also, we have the algebra one EOC test scores and their pass rates. So for seventh graders, this was ninety five percent, which is very good. Eighth graders eighty two percent, uh, but the ninth graders, it drops off all the way to thirty two percent passing. So the the vast majority of students. In ninth grade don't pass this test. Um, another piece of data is the OCPS student survey data, uh, the panorama surveys that students do every year. Uh, in most OCPS high schools, they score under forty percent for a sense of belonging. And also for testimonials from super scholars, the students that from OCPS that went to top twenty universities. And also other top students at Lakeona High School. The a consensus was reached where opportunities were either not known of or not stressed enough by counselors as beneficial until it was too late. Uh, this contributes to anxiety over what is doing enough. And it also hurts college acceptance outcomes because students starting later. It looks worse than starting earlier and having a four year commitment. So a potential diagnosis from a student's perspective. It could be classroom experiences. So some teachers are very engaging, others less so. Another could be student motivation, which can be measured by self determination theory, which I'll explain later on. Also, another thing could be post COVID gaps in knowledge, so specifically the algebra one grades. Um, students have gaps from their online learning that they haven't filled yet, and so that might contribute to their low scores. Um, also unequal access to valuable information for students. So this uh relates to the testimonials. Where students don't have the information of the opportunities earlier on. And also the limited opportunity from the school to develop soft skills and uh career exposure classes for students. And so for this project, the scope uh looks over student motivation and engagement. Uh, addresses the lack of given information and then it addresses the student opportunity used based on the given information they have. So. For giving students information, addressing that problem. An example area where their industry needs and organizations provide high quality information. So as a successful example, um, according to the US National Science Foundation. Black and Hispanic people are under underrepresented in STEM. And so the Society for Science launched a uh information. Access a program basically where they got more than four thousand underrepresented students and help and guided them, gave them information. To participate and compete in the science Olympiad. And so a quote from them, uh, they say that too few students from underrepresented groups are presented with these opportunities and they know how to successfully enter. And so another example of this uh problem with not having this know how that they describe. Is that students may not have the opportunity, may have the opportunities available to them. So for example, at my school, Lakeona High School, we we do have a club that does science Olympiad, but um lots of students don't know that that this club exists. Until much later on and their outcomes are worse because they start too late. And also the confusing college prep process. So many counselors are trained with knowledge for in state admissions. And so lots of students who might want to go to out of state are left lost because their counselors are trained for in state admissions. This affects first generation or less well off students the most because um because they have less connections for this information. So for example, deciding between dual enrollment or AP classes while weighing their class rank uh and weighted GPA versus the course rigor system by colleges. So by choosing dual enrollment classes, students can make their GPA higher than they would if they only did AP classes. But out of state colleges prefer AP classes, so they have to weigh that without any information on it. And so as a solution to this problem, uh, I propose the day one information program. Where this is an initiative to create a single easy to to digest source of opportunity and pathway information for students from day one. So this is to be given to freshmen, incoming freshmen, uh, and so it it'll explain all of their options, their opportunities and what they can do from the first day. And so counselors will also cultivate and create these ambitious students. Uh, in in late middle school to early high school so that they can give direct support to them throughout their high school career. And so some practical considerations for the solution, uh, the cost and risk is low. Because the only commitment by OCPS is to spread the uh information from the project on social media through counselors, parent meetings, et cetera. And uh to engage students as peer guidance, so students look uh to those older than essentially to figure out their pathway. So there's there's less risk in that sense. And so for this solution to work the best, um. OCPS should develop student work ethic and soft skills. Uh, because as I've shown by um reputable sources on the slides. Uh, work ethic does increase um as expected outcomes for students. And so to do this, uh, I'm proposing that these three FLVS classes, career research and decision making. Critical thinking, study skills and life management skills, which are currently only in FLVS, uh, be offered to in person high schools and middle schools. And so these would develop these soft skills that we look for in the portrait of a graduate. And also counselors could have outreach uh during these classes to develop student curiosity in their in learning. And to improve their engagement and to improve their overall satisfaction in school. And this also aids with the project by aiding in their career pathway discovery. And so another part for this to be successful is removing friction for elective GPA friction for elective classes. So for context, currently many elective classes start at four point oh on the weighted scale, some increasing to five point oh as you to get to your second and third year classes. So because of this fact, this can discourage many students from taking these new classes that would be offered. Because they're worth four point on their scale. So if students that have a weighted GPA above four point oh would be heavily discouraged from taking this because it lowers their GPA. This also includes leadership classes like SGA and Latinos in Action. So if students want to be in both of them. It's more difficult because it lowers their GPA a lot more if they have over a four point oh. Um, this also impacts students optimizing their GPA. So again, students that want to have a high GPA, they can still take these classes if this is an issue. And so as a final note, um, I propose for the school board to launch a literature review on mastery based learning and self determination theory. So for context, mastery based learning is a teaching format that waits on uh mastery of a concept until a student can move on to the next skill. So some benefits would be this would help close the gaps that uh put from COVID, right, in mathematics. Um, students could uh fill these gaps and then move on to the next thing after and then this would raise the algebra one test scores because they would fill these gaps. And so for self determination theory, uh, this is essentially psychological framework on the study motivation. So this works on three principles that you can see on the slides. Um, and so if. Schools can focus on these uh on this framework, they can see what motivates students and. Target those um problems to better have a better idea of what motivates students to get them to engage more. And so as a review of the plan, so first, I'm proposing to have uh to establish an equitable equitable distribution of information for career paths. So this would be through the day one information program. And then to nurture student uh students to discover their passions so they can follow these new pathways with stronger motivation. So this would be through the FLVS classes, removing the GPA friction and expanding counselor outreach to create prospects for top universities, not just find them. And so finally, to launch for as a long term solution, to launch a literature review for mastery based learning and self determination theory. Um, to solve the root causes for low student uh engagement motivation. Thank you.
Wow, Diego, that was fascinating. You you did a great job and I just, I want to let you know the day one information program or. I was calling it the district one information program because it just kind of fit right in there, Maria. But this is fabulous. Where's Dr. Border? Like, where were you in our planning session? We could have used you when we were talking about portrait of a graduate and all the things that we need to address. No, I'm I'm was blown away by your ideas. Um, and you're right, the the common theme between all of the what we saw today, the presentations was really access. Communication, awareness, um. And 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 showing us just how bright our students within OCPS are. If. If there is no other takeaway than than that, know that these students are OCPS grown, like they were built by OCPS and you guys are amazing. I mean, absolutely amazing. So I just want to tell you, great job and I was I was very intrigued with what you came up with. It was fabulous.
Thank you.
Um, member front.
Hey, that was uh excellent. Um, both of us were up here. I just kept saying, wow, we literally have been talking about all of these things. Um, some things I just want to touch on the what you said here about. Uh, implementing the FLVS classes, but creating them is in person. Um, I think all of those, the life management skills, critical thinking, study skills. And then career research and decision making, absolutely one hundred percent. I back that up. I think um this is something we really need to uh hone in on and. I think it's uh it is frustrating, everything you were saying with the GPA, the four point oh to the five point oh, uh, there's many different ones where um. I hear from parents who are saying, you know, I really want my kid to go through uh this um pathway, but if they take that, it's the the GPA. Isn't going to be high enough to go into the college that they're looking for or um or class rank uh whatnot. So. I think just looking at all of that and then the my last thing uh takeaway was the mastery learning. Um, I love it. I think that's really the key. We're not here to, um, I mean, for me, I I don't really. Care if my kid is getting an ABC. I want my kid knowing it and mastering the topic and what what what's at hand. Uh, not just breezing through and being able to do it for a test, but really mastering it. Uh, and so I think you've really uh hit the nail on the head with that. So. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Again, I really, I would love to get all of these uh presentations. You guys did an excellent job. Um, really went above and beyond and showed us that um we really are doing phenomenal things here. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, and member France, correct. I I hear a lot from parents about. Like hope and SGA and those type of classes that because they're not weighted enough. Kids tend, students tend to not want to take them um as an elective because it will bring down their S or their GPA, especially if they're looking to be in the top ten. I'm wondering if there's like classes at Valencia that would be weighted more that would be similar that we could offer online at schools so that they could take. Similar classes to what he suggested, but then they would be weighted more because they'd be actual college classes.
Oh, I forgot the lights on the bottom. Uh, so we certainly can look at that. We um have approached the state about the Latinos in Action. Uh, course code and they're not, they're not budging uh beyond um. I think the honors level, I'm looking for Mary Bridges, but even that is a. Problem when you're looking at kids that are taking dual enrollment and AP class that have such a higher weighting. Um, but and and that's an issue we would need to lobby at the at the state level, but certainly we can look at if any of the. Colleges or universities that we have partnerships with offer that class and then it would be a dual enrollment course that would then provide that additional weighted GPA.
Well, thank you. Um, member bird.
Um, I was just going to tell um Diego that this presentation was great. Um, the research you did was tremendous and the way you presented it, um. It's just, I mean. So good. Good job.
Thank you.
Seriously, member Salamanca, um, thank you for nailing this and shooting it out of the park because um. I mean, these kids just did a great job. I think that um. What really stuck out to me was um as member Gallo said, that we heard from them. The issues of access and understanding the options and making sure that um. All kids know what's available out there and know um. The benefits of it. I thought it was very insightful, especially Diego, when you 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 recognized the advantages that you had. Um, and compared to maybe some kids that don't have those same advantages. That is very um. Mature and grown up, you know, and and um it was really impressive, you know, and that's something that I think sometimes a lot of. A lot of people don't think about. Um, and I think it's it's really something that we have to be aware of, you know, and. You've got some kids that, and I talked about this yesterday in our planning session, the parents are. Paying hundreds and hundreds of dollars for SAT ACT prep classes for their kids and then you've got. Other kids that can only take it one time because it's the one time the school can pay for the test. So there is a real issue there and um and I appreciate you for. Being thoughtful enough to be able to recognize that um and that we need to do something about it. So um. Great job, all of you. Thank you.
Um, member Felder.
Um, I've sat and listened to all of the presentations and. Um, I have no doubt in my mind that um. Orange County Public Schools are producing some great students who are really prepared. For the incoming future for you and uh board member Salomonica, thank you so much. Uh, you were so exciting. I said, what is she trying to do? Her little, what is this fellows and all? What is she doing with her little people with her? But listen, this is the perfect template. That the rest of our schools, high schools um could follow and we could also begin to incorporate our. Uh, middle school children, but I'm, you know, I'm I'm just so impressed, but I'm not surprised. Because I've taught in this district forty years, okay, what? Yeah, it was OCPS number thirty nine, forty. And I've had an opportunity to meet students that were just so talented and. It wasn't anything I did, it was just I was just there to help navigate what was already there. And I am just so happy to know that. This learning is 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 going on and is is continual. Um, I am so serious about uh. Perhaps uh, I don't know what it would take, uh, but this could be a remarkable template. For the uh rest of our high school students and I I said it, I don't know whether um. I mentioned it to you all when I was in my time of illness, um, several of my nurses. One of them uh who was with me and I said, you look like a child. She said, well, I just graduated. She says. You were at my graduation. I came out of OTC. I said, ooh, really? She said, yeah, and I was everybody, most of the people that I was working with that were nurses. Came out of Orange Technical College and I was just so impressive. I felt safe. You know, and uh I I'm just so happy that we had this opportunity. Uh, board member Salomonica to to meet your fellows and uh ladies and gentlemen. Listen, we are beyond proud and I'm hoping that you hold on to this because if you decide to go to college or technical school. You need to have this. You need to have this and share it. Of course, all of us want it too, but I mean, you need to have it and share it because. You really get it. You get this and I am so, so very impressed and thank you. Uh, board member Salomonica and and your fellows. Thank you so much.
Thank you, member Felder. Um, superintendent, did you?
Just want to say wow to all of you. I'm just amazed uh at not just the level of dedication that you had over the summer. Uh, to give up uh the the time, especially right before, you know, some of you, your senior year. Uh, and put the work, uh, the time into this work. Um, I have no doubt that you have an amazing future ahead of you and we're very thankful for the information and I can assure you that. And I can assure you that we already have staff that has been, we've been texting and talking about what the next steps are. But I just am so incredibly proud as the superintendent for Orange County Public Schools. And I know that what brought you here today is not just the experiences you've had in our district, but your family, your support system, your own efforts and hard work. But I am going to take a little bit of pride and credit and just so thankful that you are here to show what a public education can do and that our students are incredibly bright, incredibly thoughtful, and are dedicated to helping even at a very young age. So thank you so much, and I wish you so much success, not only this upcoming year, but in the years to come.
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. Member Salamanca.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Board, for staying the extra time for our presentations. I was really excited for you all to see what the fellows have been. You know, I just walk around with all these fellows following me during the summer, and everyone wonders what, you know, I'm up to no good, but we're up to good stuff. But thank you, District Two fellows. Very demure, very mindful. I wish that Mr. Cruz, who also works on my All Things with me, was here to see this phenomenal work, but I know he's following us along on YouTube from UChicago. But Darius, also an OCPS graduate that you many all know, he's at UChicago, and he helps me with all kinds of super scholars, summer fellows. And it's just awesome to work with OCPS graduates. And as someone who came from OCPS and cares deeply about this district and wants to give back, I also get so much pleasure from finding other students who I believe can also be leaders in our district and beyond and get them involved and engaged with problems that we tackle every day and get their perspective. It's really a totally new perspective. Happy for all the staff that stuck around to hear you all out, and I know I'm getting texts asking for the presentation, so we'll definitely be sharing that. But you all did a phenomenal job this summer. I had the time of my life with all of you, and we're all excited for what's ahead, for your next steps. And of course, you got some lovely recommendation letters from me for whatever you do. And thank you for just the perspective you've provided in helping us be better for all of you. And then I think some parents are here. I can raise hands if we're parents of the fellows. Awesome products of OCPS for sure, but also thank you, parents, because you should be very proud of the incredible kids we have here and the job. And, you know, when I, they were here this summer, and you had to drive them all the way downtown. This is what they were up to. But thank you for letting us borrow them and engage them in everything we do and hopefully learned and shaped a lot of their thinking as they go on to hopefully be the leaders after this generation, you know, decides it's time to go and be at a beach somewhere. So I hope that we can, you know, trust in you all to take over and do a good job. But after today, I feel good about that. Do we want to take pictures with the family and the fellows? Yes. Let's do it. Come on, come on up right here with the parents.
Wrap your own child.
Lord have mercy.
Love to presentation better. Good, good. Stay there. Big smile. Happy tada. Give me a tada, like, yeah.
All right, Member Bird, are you going to close us out?
Yes, well, I should have said this earlier when Mr. Palmarini's family was in here, but I wanted to, speaking of products of OCPS, nobody really mentioned, and he didn't, which he usually always does, mention that he is a Apopka High School graduate and started in elementary school all the way through OCPS, and now here he is the general counsel for OCPS. So when we think about what our kids can achieve, it's anything, right? The sky's the limit. And I'm hoping that you're going to be going out into schools and telling kids your story, right? Anyway, that's it. I just wanted to say congratulations.
Thank you, Member Bird. I want to give a shout out to Chris, who is behind the scenes. We got wonderful new mics. So for those of you who frequent these meetings or are watching, you'll notice that we push the button a lot, and then we're constantly, like, looking to see if it's on. We have these very bright lights now that make it very easy to see when our mic is on. So we're very thankful to Chris, who was able to fix a problem for us. And with that, finding no further business before the board, this meeting is adjourned.